Yes, everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
of the United States and the
And to the Republic.
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the Board of Education will be discussing the administrative capital and program components of the 2022-2023 budget.
Hey, ready?
Yes.
Can you all see my screen? Yeah. So we are amazingly at budget season. I want to first thank the business office and all of our administrative team for really working diligently on putting this together. So we we talk about the purpose of our school budget and in Baldwin, we are very deliberate that our school budget is all about our kids. It's been an interesting few years and this year does not disappoint. The analogy that we like to make is that, and we have for the last few years, that the real story is not always what you see, but it's what's below the surface. And so we use the iceberg as our analogy. The real focus for us has always been, but it really is exaggerated this year and will continue to be next year, is the issue of sustainability and multi-year planning. What seems to be very obvious on the surface, you receive a lot of money or you lose a lot of money. In the end, the real, the real strategy and the real value is looking not only at the current year, but really making an effort to make sure you're planning at least two years ahead. And so what you will hear tonight is that two, a couple of meetings ago, Dr. Robinson shared the cycle of budgeting, which for us begins months and months ago. We talked about the budget coming from directly from the buildings, from each department and each area with a focus on students, looking at trend analysis and needs and asking for documentation. So it's not an outright, this is what I want, therefore you will get, but really having to talk about why people need what they need. Looking at cost drivers and contractual obligations and really planning strategically, going to the departments and the building principals and the cabinet and every, all the directors and really planning for what we need for our students' educational program. Working with cabinet and each other to finalize what we think is both reasonable in terms of what people need and reasonable in terms of what we're asking the community for. And then those budget proposals are all put together into what you will see tonight, which is the first planning session of the board. So let's put it in perspective. We hear a lot about foundation aid, foundation aid, foundation aid. And the covers all across the state was there was a windfall of money that school districts received. So let's put that in perspective. When you went, go back and we only went back to 2014, 15, but when you go back to 24, 2014, 2015, and you look forward to 21, 22, you see in red, all of the foundation aid that was held back from the district, six million, seven million, almost seven million again, nine million, 10 million, 10 million, 12 million. And once again in 21, 22, almost another $10 million. You add all that up, that's a lot of money. This year, we were promised, this is what's forecasted, an additional $6 million of foundation aid from New York State. That is a lot of money and we're thrilled to have that money. But remember that that money is only going to show up this year. Is it possible we might get a similar amount next year? Yes. Is it possible the year after? Absolutely not. And so this is really the equivalent of money that you will see once and you will not continue to receive it. Let's also remember that for the past 10 years, almost 10 years, we've had money withheld every year. And so the additional 6 million is a welcome relief, but it does not compare at all to the amount of money that was never received. Again, this is just a graphic display of the same thing. When you look at the blue line, that is the actual foundation aid received. When you look at the orange line, that is what we should have received. And so you see that gap was narrowing, but remember that what's in the area to the left of the dotted line is money that was not received and will not be received. So that's $114 million that Baldwin should have received in foundation aid and never received in foundation aid. So when we talk about our budget, again, this is about planning for sustainability. It's about making sure that whatever money we receive, that we use it in a way that does not cause us any kind of grief going forward into the succeeding, the next series of budget years. So, so that is really the theme for this budget. When you look at the proposed budget and you look at the expenses, obviously they have to be equal. That is what a balanced budget is. And in order to do that, it's all about planning. So this current budget, the 22, 23 school year budget, next school year, really looks at the restoration of foundation aid. It is not a full restoration, but it's getting closer. And we've used that restoration aid to make sure that we could balance this budget. The test here is as we're going straight, what's around the corner? And what's around the corner, we don't know and we never do know. Remember as well that this budget is based on the proposed budget of the governor. It has not yet been an approved budget. So anything can change between now and the time that the budget is approved in New York State. Again, just considering where we've been, there have been some major cost drivers in the last few years. In technology, for example, we provided one-to-one devices in students in grades four through 12. There were associated with that additional software licensing, additional needs in terms of network capacity and bandwidth. But we did manage that and we were able to achieve it. There were additional changes in operational structure. We needed additional cleaning staff, PPE and material costs. None of that has really changed. The additional cleaning staff is still on, on, on staff. We are open and proud of the work that we've done this year, but we do not forget for a minute to make sure that the safety precautions that we put in place for the last couple of years, that we continue to do that. So we have done that. When we look at the longer range financial planning, we want to make sure that we strategically use our federal grant money, that we're looking at multi-year sustainability and that we are having conversations about the use of reserves. And let me share what that means. So you will see in this proposed budget, there is a, there is less money going from the reserves into the general fund. In years past, all of those years where you saw red in foundation aid, we had to take money out of reserves in order to balance the budget because we didn't have enough in foundation aid in order to do that. This year, we'll be taking less out of reserves because we don't need that money to balance this budget. The more money that we're able to keep in reserves, when we look further down the line, that money can then be used in two years from now, when we don't see an additional $6 million in foundation aid. So it's not that the money is not going to be used, it's not going to be used now. It really is in essence, going into a reserve for future budgets to make sure that we are able to balance the budgets going into the future. And then some of the other things we've been able to do, we've had some multi-year capital projects that we've done. We have put in the Plaza elevator that is near completion. This summer, we will begin on an elevator for Steel School. And last year, we also approved the Plaza window replacement, which will also begin this summer. We have done a lot of adjustments to our classroom environments and you'll hear more about this later. But we have really reduced the size of all of our elementary classes. The reason why we have done that is in part to minimize the number of people in a classroom at the elementary level in order to create some space between our students, but also because we know that it's good pedagogical practice. We've also added some additional student supports, be it in the form of psychologists or social workers, or we introduced the ruler program at the elementary level and restorative circles at the secondary level. So we talked a little bit, I mentioned class size. This is actually statistics that are given to us from NASA BOCs. This was sent to us about two months ago. These, they survey all the school districts in Nassau County and in terms of class size. And it really is a pleasure to share that the efforts that we put in in terms of reducing class size are illustrated in the report they put out. So these are median numbers, which is actually a better metric than average numbers. So Baldwin in kindergarten was ranked really third lowest in the county. So there are four districts that have a median class size of 16, one district that has a median class size of 16 and a half, and Baldwin has a median class size in kindergarten of 17 students. To the right of that is the median for first grade and you can see Baldwin's median, median number is 14. We rank lowest in all of Nassau County in terms of class size and grade one. In grade two, Baldwin's median grade two class size was 15 and a half. Also ranked number one in all of Nassau County. Grade three Baldwin's median class size is 16, ranked number one in Nassau County. Grade four, our median class size was 20 and that was a ranking of 16 in the county. But keep in mind that there were two ranked in the, as two, there were two ranked as five. There were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven ranked as seven and two ranked as 14. And so if you take that into account, you have one, two, three, four, five, six. That would put us as really ranked seven in all of Nassau County for grade four. Grade five, our average class, our median class size was 20, with the lowest being 17 and Valley Stream 30. Again, multiple districts at 17, 18, 19, 19 and a half, and Baldwin coming in at 20. And so we're really proud of that. Overall kindergarten through grade 12, Baldwin ranked number one in terms of class size. So what does that mean? It means that we took the resources of the school district, including some of the federal money that we received to make sure that we maximized class size by making it as small as possible. And I will share that the as possible had everything to do with the number of rooms available. We are using every single nook and cranny, all over every building to make sure that we had enough classrooms to, to keep those class sizes low. We know that there was some learning that was, was needed to be jump-started this year. And we felt very strongly that keeping class size as low as possible was, was necessary going into the school year. So when we look at our budget, we look in three areas. We look administrative, program and capital. And tonight, we're going to present all three of those areas of the budget. So this is kind of a summary chart. What we are looking at is a total budget for the 22, 23 school year of $146 million, $146,484,556, of which 101,979 is tax levy and 45 million is coming from other income, which includes state aid, reserves, appropriated fund balance and miscellaneous income. The total budget to budget increase from this current school year to next school year is 3.18%. There is detail in, in the budget, which is by function code. And what you'll see when you look at the detailed budget, is there some areas that have either significant decreases or significant increases in this? And, and I want to remind the board and the public that when we talk about the administrative, we are not talking administration. We are talking administrative. There is a, there is a significant difference between the two. And what you will see in terms of the cost drivers are things like increases in just the cost of doing business. So advertising, for example, has gone up, postage has gone up. There's increases to services that we use for BOCs that have gone up. Medical costs, the cost of medical insurance has gone up, cost of hardware and software. Not only has the cost gone up, but our numbers have gone up. And so just overall, there is an increase there. So when you look at capital, what you will see is an overall increase of 0.57. The cost drivers in the capital component of the budget are things like supplies, custodial supplies, repairs, contributions to ERS, which is the, the state pension system for people that are in the civil service category. And also in here is a significant transfer to capital. One point, I'm sorry, in the proposed budget, there's $3.725 million, which is a, an increase of this current school year of $1.36 million. And that transfer to capital, we'll talk about a little bit later, but it's going to three projects. It is going to repair the soffits at Schubert School, to repair seven of the, or rebuild seven of the tennis courts at the high school and additional safety and security enhancements across the district. And finally, the third function code is program. Those are the things we know go directly to students. The difference in cost drivers is 3.54%. And the majority of those costs fall into categories like salaries, special education services, BOC services, educational software licensing and, and things of that nature. The largest cost driver here, there are two. One is, well, the, one major one, which is at the very end, which is transfer to the school food service fund. So we currently are mandated to provide free lunch to all students. We do not know what is going to happen next year, but this is two years in a row that we have been mandated to provide that. And so what does that mean? It means that what we would, what we would normally expend is significantly higher than what we would expend when we were not a full free lunch and breakfast program. And the last thing that I just want to point out to the board, in line 2070 in-service teacher training instruction and 2110 regular school, those two function codes are related here. The 2070 in-service training instruction, where you see an additional $1.5 million, those were additional secondary teachers that were hired for the middle school and high school. But what you will see is the additional cost of that is really being covered by the federal grants that we received. And so although in this line item, it shows a significant increase, there is reimbursement through the federal grants for that line item. Finally, on the revenue side of the budget, we are looking at state aid increasing, which we talked about. That is absolutely a function of the additional foundation aid that we will receive this year. Well, we are budgeting for this year, we will receive it hopefully next year. We are looking at a reduction in appropriated reserves and appropriated fund balance. What does that mean? It means that instead of taking money out of the appropriated reserves and the appropriated fund balance to help balance this budget, we don't need to do that this year because of the additional foundation aid. So we won't be pulling money out of those reserves and fund balance. Instead, we will use that to make sure that there is money there to balance future budgets or to add to capital programs, for example. So in future years, we are looking at pilots of 0.797, excuse me, and the property tax revenue, which this is the tax cap of 1.98. So while there is a delta, a difference in the budget of 3.18% in terms of revenue, only 1.98 of that is coming from the tax levy. We talked about, I'm sorry, we are looking to use money that is in the capital reserve. So if you recall, a few years ago, we established a capital reserve of up to $25 million. We have managed to fund some of that capital reserve through unspent, unspent money and prior budgets. And what we're going to be asking the public for is approval of the use of $16.1 million. This is not additional money. We are not asking for this money. This money is currently sitting in the capital reserve. But if you recall, we have to get, we have to get voter approval to establish a reserve, which we did a few years ago. We can put money into that reserve, but in order to spend that reserve, we have to go to the public and ask for permission to, to, to spend it. And so what you're looking at here is a capital reserve, which we have put money into, but we will be asking the community to allow us to spend $16.1 million in, that is already in that capital reserve. And this is what we are proposing to use it on. We're proposing to redo bathrooms district-wide, make them not only ADA compliant, but make them look like they belong in 2023. And the total amount that we're allocating for bathrooms is $11,255,000. We know that our bathrooms are in severe need of upgrades and so that is a big project for us. The second thing that we're asking the public for is to allow us to replace the high school field. We are proposing an athletic turf field, the football field. In addition to that, we are, we want to complete that whole area. And so we want to be able to do grandstands, which includes the press box, the scoreboard and paving. That's an additional $1.6 million. And to redo the high school track, which is just under $900,000. And so the total cost of bathrooms, a turf field at the high school, which is for football, but it's a multi-sport field, grandstands and press box and the high school track at a total of $16.1 million. Again, I want to reiterate that this is not additional money that we are asking for. We have this money, we just need to ask the voters to approve the expenditure of the $16.1 million. The next thing that we're asking the, the community to approve is a new reserve, a technology reserve. Why do we need a technology reserve? We have gone to a one-to-one computing environment as a result of the pandemic, but we expect that that is something that we are going to have to maintain. And so that is a significant cost to the district. What we want to be able to do, similar to the capital reserve, is to be able to basically create like a savings account where we can fund the reserve a little bit at a time. And when it comes time to replace some of the one-to-one devices, which will happen every five years, in another three years, I want to say, we are going to have to replace those one-to-one devices every single year. They are on a cycle. So we won't replace all of them every five years, but in three years, we'll replace a 20% of them. And a year later, another 20% and a year later, another 20%. And that will go on from now until forever. And so instead of looking to have money in every single budget, which I think is unsustainable, we're looking to create a reserve that would allow us to save for this kind of an expenditure. Again, we're not asking the community for money for this reserve. We are just asking them for the authority to create a reserve that currently has, it doesn't exist. And when they vote on it, if they approve it, it will have nothing in it until we can begin to fund that reserve. When we want to spend from this reserve, in order to replace those personal devices, we have to go to the community and ask for permission to spend the money that would be in that reserve. So, you know, getting to the end, basically, we are between the, the proposed amount from the governor's budget, a 1.98 tax levy, we are able to, to balance this budget. The expenditures would equal the revenue. To give you some idea of the financial planning in the district, you'll see in green, the 1920 per pupil expenditures. And in what looks to me to be like a purplish-blue, the 2021 expenditures per pupil. If you look carefully, what you'll see is while we still are below the Nassau County average and well below the district that expends the most amount of money per student, we've actually reduced our per pupil expenditure from the 1920 school year to the 2021 school year. So in addition to providing all of those additional services to our kids, we were able to reduce the per pupil expenditure. Last thing to really talk about is the transfer to capital. This is within the budget. We are in a position where we are being, we are being mandated to replace the soffits by New York State of Schubert School. They, the cost of that is $2.2 million. Our high school tennis courts have been repaired and repaired and repaired. But we need to do some more restoration because they are unusable at this point. And we are looking at some safety and security enhancements across the district. And the total there for transfer to capital is 3.725 million. This is all part of the budget. So the tax cap for Baldwin is 1.98%. That is what we are asking the voters to approve. If the budget is defeated twice, the tax levy cannot be 1.98%. It has to go down to zero. And what that means for us is the budget would have to be a zero tax levy. All capital work would be removed from the budget. There would be no new equipment. There would be no new uniforms, pupil uniforms is the legal term for it. But no new athletic uniforms, no cheer uniforms, nothing that is in the budget would be, would be approved. And no general fund subsidy for food service. So again, you know, I point out that this is all about sustainability at this point. It is about making sure that we're not spending money wildly because we received some additional funds this year. It's to make sure that the additional funds that we received have a life of multiple years because we just do not know what's around the bend. Last, and then I'll open it up to the Last, and then I'll open it up to the board for questions. We always go back to the purpose of our school budget, which is all about kids. It is making sure that not only do our kids have an, an excellent education, but it also supports all of the extracurricular stuff that makes the school experience just an exceptional program in Baldwin. This is cool.
Dr. Kami, in relation to the capital projects, again, and I know you said it quite a few times, but just to reiterate, that is not anything that would come out of this budget. The money is there. One, and, and two, when would that work possibly begin?
So there are two areas of capital work that we want to do, right? One is the use of the capital reserves, which includes the bathrooms, the athletic fields, the grandstands and, and the track. That money is there already. We're just asking for the authority to spend it. The other work is the, the Schubert soffits, the tennis courts and the additional safety and security expenditures. That money is in the budget, the budget that was just presented at a tax levy of 1.9%.
Okay. And if we were given permission to spend the money for those projects, how, how soon might they begin?
So the budget vote is in May. As soon as we get approval to do that work, we start our design process and send it up. As soon as that is done, it goes up to New York State because they have to approve all of the plans. Once the plans are approved, it goes out to the, through the bidding process, the RFP process. And then we can start work. So I mean, realistically, you're probably looking at a year away. A lot hinges on the, the, the department up at state ed that is approving this work and how far backlog they are. So it's hard to say, but I do know the work is needed. And it is the tip of the iceberg, no pun intended, but, but it needs to be done.
Yes, thank you very much. And I think we all have to keep in mind, some of our buildings are 100 years old. You know, my house is about to be 100 years old and it's time to completely redo everything that, that we had already done. So, you know, to keep up with the district this size and our buildings are beautiful, but it's, it's tough to keep up with. So thank you and thank everyone who works so hard on that.
I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that I can see the rest of the board. I don't know if you can either, but this way, if anybody, any of the board members have questions, at least you can, you can see them. Any questions from the board?
Ms. O'Hagan has questions.
Question, I'm sorry, I had to unmute myself. On slide 37, where you talk about creating the technology reserve, one of the things is district, additional demands on district technology infrastructure. What, explain a little bit about what that would involve. What kinds of infrastructure are you talking about?
So those are, that is really the backbone of the network. The majority of what we expect to use the reserve for is replacement of one-to-one devices. But as the technology changes, as infrastructure grows old, we may have to add more, more hotspots in our buildings. You know, the technology companies have an amazing way of changing certain things about their technology that forces you to change other things on the backend. So basically, it's a reserve that would just preserve the technology environment that we have built. Because remember that we went from an environment that had X number of computers and now we've multiplied it by a lot. And so it really is meant to, to just maintain the infrastructure that we have. We have, you know, servers running in the back, a lot of the stuff that we've moved to the cloud that we don't have control over those costs. We are always looking at that, but a perfect example during, you know, the 1920 school year, we were using Google Classroom. That was something that we did, not to the extent that we use it now. Then the pandemic hit and K to eight, we really were using Google Classroom a lot. At the high school level, we use something called Canvas. But what was a free service from Google back then, in order to maintain the level that we were using, the data privacy that we needed, we needed to buy into Google Enterprise. And so where there was no cost to something before, there was a cost now.
Thank you, thank you. If nobody else has something, I have one other question. Dr. Kami, the slide 40, anticipated capital projects, safety and security enhancements. Do you have something, some specific things in mind?
There are some backend things, additional security cameras, lighting, things like that. But that is something that we're in the process of evaluating overall. One of the things we're considering under that, and again, you know, a lot of this has to do with how much things are going to cost. And, and I'm sure that you know that we've, we've seen a tremendous increase in, in just the cost of materials. One of the areas that we know that is going to include is the, the, the one-lock system for all of our doors. So we were able to purchase new doors for all of the classrooms in our district. We're in the, we're finalizing that right now. We have prototyped the door. We've prototyped the lock. We are really almost ready to go with that. There is some additional cost to making sure that we have a one-touch lock system on that. And so some of that money will go to that.
Thank you, thank you.
Annie, Mrs. DeRusco, sorry.
That's okay. For slide 39, and I may have missed, missed this when you were speaking, our per pupil expenditure is lower than the average. So all the other two categories went up. Can you elaborate on the reasoning for that? Why it's, it's going downwards? Where's the others?
You know, that's actually a really good question. I'm not sure the reason it's gone down. I, I would like, however, to punt to Mrs. O'Hagan because Mrs. O'Hagan has always historically spoken to this slide. And so, Ms. O'Hagan, do you want to speak a little bit to the slide of the, this one?
I know which side you mean. Yes, I'm not sure what you want me to say. Well, I, I always, I do. I like this slide because I think it, it is a good graphic representation of what, how much we get for our dollar. We, you know, I like to say we provide an extraordinary educational experience and we are spending less on it than the average, than the Nassau County average, not to mention way less than districts that, like Locust Valley, that's been so much more per pupil. So I always, I always like to make that point because in public presentations, sometimes raw numbers don't really mean a lot. It means a lot more when you compare us to the per pupil spending in other districts. But it's a very gross way of, of looking at statistics. So how they, the details that make it shift are not something I'm really conversant with. I, I haven't looked at that.
I, I will share as well, Mr. DeRusco, that, that, that it's, it's, it's not down significantly. So prior budget, it was $27,930 a student. And this one at $27,258 a student. But it is, it is, you know, slightly down compared to like a Locust Valley that went from $42,000 a student up to four, almost $46,000.
Right, that's why I was just curious.
Just better at it.
Yeah, all right. I'll take that. Thank you.
But I, you know, I want to reiterate what Mrs. O'Hagan said, what our students get. And I don't want to say what they get for the money, and I don't want to say what they get in comparison. The opportunities that our kids have from kindergarten through grade 12 is absolutely phenomenal. The, the, Dr. Gallo has been going through the list of extracurriculars at the high school. And if I tell you there's pages and pages and pages of clubs and extracurricular, you know, one of the things we pride ourselves in is if you're a student in Baldwin, there is always a home for you here. There is always a place for you here. There is a club or, or an event or something that, you know, really gives you a, a, a hook into the environment. And so, you know, I am, if you couldn't tell, exceptionally proud of the instructional environment and the extracurricular environment that our kids are offered.
If I can just add to that, I always brag about the fact that we offer such an extraordinary program, but we haven't just kept layering cost upon cost upon cost. To your credit and the credit of the other administrators, we have managed to substitute one thing for another, be flexible in terms of what our students want and need and constantly tweaking the offerings so that our costs aren't going up dramatically despite the fact that we are, we continue to offer new things and offer a really broad program. So I, I think that's, that's part of the explanation that I usually give is that we get, we certainly get a lot for what we're spending per pupil. But part of that is because we've, we, you have been so, so smart in the way the money has been allocated. So kudos.
And I'd like to chime in along those lines. I have a question regarding the slide with respect to the security. Is any of that adable, Dr. Gary?
You mean on, on the capital project? It's a good question. Dr. Robinson, do you know the answer to that question?
Yes, some, some of it will, and it depends on the ratio and depends on the scope of the work and how it's packaged with other things that we're doing.
Okay. And coming back to quality of education, yesterday I had a, an opportunity to interact with a couple of students from Brookside. One was a second grader and one was a fourth grader. And so we're standing in line and I'm waiting to get my shot for the vaccination. And so I asked the second grader, oh, so how was your day? Any kind of interesting things are you learning? And so the second grader says, oh, yeah, we, we were learning about nematodes. I was like, whoa, second grader talking about nematodes. I was floored. I was like, well, can you tell me what a nematode is? And so he went into, you know, deep, great detail about what nematodes are. Of course, the second grader is the boy typically is going to be fascinated by worms. But it was just an interesting conversation and I would like to say that I'm sure in conjunction with his prior but the school district, we're providing a level of education where students in second grade are using like $25 vocabulary words. I mean, I was knocked off my feet, you know, not that I should be surprised because that's the level of excellence that we have in the district, but kudos to the curriculum and, and, and the people who are planning the curriculum and just, I, I mean, I was just floored. So I just wanted to kind of share that experience.
Funny that you mentioned that because in the second half of this meeting, Mrs. Reed, we'll be talking more about the science curriculum. And maybe we'll even give you a quiz on those nematodes. Any other questions? So again, I'll just reiterate that the tax levy that is 1.98%. It really is a budget that's looking not only at next year, but at least three years out to ensure the financial health of the district. I think that's one of the mistakes that's made a lot. You know, people are just looking at the year in front and not saying, okay, what's the impact of that two years out? I would never want us to get to the point where we were looking at massive layoffs or cutting or any of that. And to Mrs. Walsh's credit and Dr. Robinson's credit, there's a lot of, you know, tugging and pulling and making sure that they are not only developing a budget for next year, but for at least a three-year forecast to make sure that we're financially stable. So we'll repeat a similar budget presentation on March 2nd. I think that we are set to possibly adopt it on the 2nd. We're hoping that the governor's budget is an on-time budget and we can finalize some of the numbers. And then we will do, begin to do, you know, roadshows to the community. I just would like to, you know, express my thanks and to just also make sure the community is aware that in a tax-kept budget of 1.9%, there is a lot of big capital work that is part of this, something the community's been asking for. With our failed Innovation 2020 bond, we have tried to pull out some of those projects and do them along the way. We'll never be able to do everything in that bond through capital reserves or, or, or things like we're trying to do next year. But it's at least a step in the right direction.
Okay, Dr. Kami, if we are finished with the budget work session, should we start the public session early or take a 10-minute break?
So I think you need to take the 10-minute break because on the public postings, it starts at 8 o'clock. So if you would all mute yourselves and shut your screens off and then come back in 11 minutes at 8 o'clock. All right, all right. And so this is just a break. All right, thank you.
Thank you. As detailed in the Friday mailing.
Some of.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasures Report for the month of December 2021 as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Some of.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I will now turn it over to Dr. Kami, the superintendent of our schools.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start with our, the presentation of our K-12 Science Department. There are, I've invited three people to present. Obviously, Mr. Maniella, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. We also have with us Susan Farigno, who is our Science Supervisor, and Nomi Rosen, who is our Administrator for Professional Development. So if Mrs. Farigno and Ms. Rosen, if you can turn on your cameras, and Mr. Maniella, can you share your screen? We will get started.
Okay, can everyone see my screen? Okay, excellent, excellent. So as Dr. Kami mentioned, we're joined tonight by Ms. Farigno as well as Ms. Rosen. We're excited to present to you our K-12 Science Program. First, we'd like to start by giving you a little bit of introduction about the changes in the science learning standards. These were adopted in July of 2017 by New York State. Students under these new standards become engaged with science engineering practices, disciplinary core ideas and cross-cutting concepts. You'll notice that there's a very robust, this is just one little picture from the standards, that's a very robust curriculum that shows the standards, the, the science and engineering practices that we should touch upon, the core ideas and the cross-cutting concepts. New York State also provided us a timeline for adoption. We luckily have been well underway with our adoption under this, got help and support of Ms. Farigno and Ms. Rosen. There was a change in the timeline due to the pandemic and our schools going to hybrid instruction and, and remote instruction. So we are well under our way. This year will be the last year of the fourth grade science assessment. And then there's a year off, and then the new science assessment in fourth and eighth grade will pick up in 2024. Then it's followed by new assessments every year thereafter, under these new standards. So, but we've been preparing, as I noted before, we are well underway in our invitation stage. And our students will be well, well, very well prepared for these assessments. And teachers will be working diligently at covering these new concepts. So I posed this little question for you and everyone to look at. This is something students would be presented. This is a science phenomenon, and they might get an image like this or several images. And they're going to be asked to come up with a claim, then evidence to support their claim and reasoning based on the image as well as their knowledge of science. So to all our audience members as well as our Board of Education, I ask you, what do you think is causing the fish to, to die? And in your response, you should tell us your claim, your evidence, and your reasoning. So give everyone a few seconds to think about that. Of course, we'll give our students a little more time. But there's a lot to think about, right? Look at the image. This is really going to go deep into students' thinking. And the answer for this particular image is the fish are dying due to algae blooms. And then students have to support their evidence and then talk about the reasoning, but algae blooms are created due to the excess of nitrogen levels and phosphorus levels. The, that's from Bay Park, for instance, over the summer, you might have heard in our news that had excessive algae blooms due to the nitrogen levels exceeding certain rates. And that algil, algae in the water caused the sunlight not to go deep into the, the water, reduction in oxygen, and therefore changes in temperature and changes in our ecosystem ultimately resulting in the fish to die. There were several instructional shifts that we felt were essential in terms of supporting the new standards. And these are the instructional shifts that our teachers have been implementing. And you'll hear about these in greater detail tonight from Ms. Farigno and Ms. Rosen. But one instructional shift was focusing on conceptual and deep understanding. Another shift was incorporating literacy strategies into science. And finally, we were infusing instructional technology to enhance science instruction.
So our first instructional shift with the focus on conceptual and deeper understanding, previously our learners were expected to memorize content to, that the educators presented to them. So they were just a receiver of knowledge. Now there's a greater emphasis on our learners in gate, being engaged in discovery and conducting experiments and investigations, making connections to those real-world problems. So those phenomena like the fish you had seen before would be presented at the start of the unit. Teachers would engage our learners in investigations. Then throughout the unit, they would touch upon that phenomena again, and then at a summary, they would apply what they learned to a new scenario.
When looking at deeper understandings for K-5, we build them by immersing students in unforgettable experiences that are rich, engaging intellectually, emotionally, and kinesthetically. These photos capture distinctive ways in which those experiences are built into our curriculum. We work a lot outside and we bring the outside back in as well. So in kindergarten, you'll see students studying trees out in the schoolyard, first grades evaporating puddles. Second graders would be studying worms and ants in the soil, in the gardens. And third graders were watching the birds at the feeders. Fourth graders might be studying the sky above them in Baldwin, and fifth graders, the rocks beneath their feet to, to learn the history of Long Island. On the right-hand side of this slide, you can see an integrated curriculum project with science and social studies called the Three Sisters Garden at Lennox, where they're planted corn, beans, and squash in their study of the Iroquois.
And as students in the secondary are working, they are working collaboratively. They perform investigations both inside and outside the classroom as seen in this video. Our second shift is to incorporate literacy strategies in science. We have incorporated opportunities for our learners to engage in science literacy, whether it be through the CERs where they are stating a claim, supporting their claim with evidence, and then stating the scientific reasoning for that claim as in the image right here. The other opportunities are through thinking protocols that our educators have engaged in professional development on for both Project Zero and Avid, including See Think Wonders, Explanation Game, the Micro Labs Protocol, and Peel the Fruit.
In elementary school, students are journaling in their science notebook. They also build in nonfiction reading and research. High-quality science texts are read alouds, but also independent reading as well. And there are integrated curriculum units between the reading and writing program and the science program.
And on the secondary level, we have been stressing the focus of our learners to make their thinking visible. And here are just a few examples that we captured of them doing that. Our third shift was to infuse instructional technology to enhance science instruction. So we have found different technology applications that we expose our learners to that will help support what they're learning. Few to stand out are our Explore Learning Gizmo and FET simulations. These have allowed our learners pre-COVID and during COVID to engage in simulations that allow them to still investigate and carry out activities and meet the state lab requirement, as well as perform simulations for activities that they would not be able to do safely in the classroom. In addition, another one that we just recently rolled out is Paper. Paper is an online tutoring platform where students can receive help from a tutor 24/7. So they no longer have to wait until the next day when they have class again or when they have extra help. They're able to get immediate support and help.
Just to show a little more evidence as to why these instructional shifts are essential for our students to be successful, here's an example of a question from the 2005 fourth grade science assessment. So if you take a moment, you read this question, you'll also, you'll see there's a little couple sentences, but then the question simply is identify one opinion that is stated in the paragraph. Not much thinking is really needed to answer this question. When you look at a 2019 released question from the fourth grade science assessment, you'll see there's a lot more to the question. There's an image to analyze. There's a little passage to read, and when you look at the questions, it asks the students to explain and to also describe. So it's much more in-depth, critical thinking skills are needed to answer the questions. Another example, here's a question from a eighth grade science assessment from 20, 2005. There's an image to analyze, and the question just is which fossils considered the oldest? I'd ask everyone to jot down their thoughts, which one's the oldest, and we'll review it later. Versus 2019 released question from the eighth grade science assessment. And once again, you'll see there is an image, but it asks you for the layer that is the oldest, but then to explain why you selected that layer. So once again, more critical analysis is needed. Another example is from the 2005 environment regions, little passage, diagrams to analyze, and asks learners to complete the diagram. This is a more current released assessment from 2019. The passage is much longer, so there's more reading required. You need stronger literacy skills. And the, and the questions are asking the learners to describe the shapes of the molecules, and then also to explain how the response of the guard cells operate.
In the elementary school, each grade has their own thematic study for the year. And we do this so that there can be a story told for children and teachers to go on a journey together to unfold and unpack a story about this topic. Eventually, these, all of these themes build on each other so that fifth graders can begin to understand their role and responsibility as stewards in Long Island and in our community.
In the middle school, our sixth grade learners engage in physical science topics that are associated and related to both physics and chemistry. In seventh grade, our learners study life science topics as well as an introduction to some earth science topics to give them a foundation and background knowledge if they're going into the Earth Science Honors Course. Whether or not they're going into the Earth Science Honors Course, in eighth grade, our learners learn about the earth, its systems, and how we impact the earth. Our eighth grade honors will take our ninth grade Earth Science Regents course, where they'll take a Regents at the end of the year. After Earth Science, they take a Living Environment course. From there, our learners take a chemistry course. We offer different levels. And after that, we have physics. We do offer a variety of AP classes, Advanced Placement classes, such as Environmental Science, Biology, Chemistry, Physics 1, which is algebra-based, Physics C, which is calculus-based, AP Computer Science Principles. We have electives of Marine Biology and Forensics along with dual enrollment courses for credit for those courses where they receive three college credits from Malloy College. We have Medical Academy offerings. The culminating course for that is an anatomy and physiology class in which they can earn up to eight credits from LIU. And we have a STEM Engineering Academy electives. Our format of our Regents does involve both multiple choice and constructed response. As you saw when Mr. McNella presented some of the constructed response questions, our students are expected to write and explain. Therefore, we're constructing our curriculum so that our students have opportunities to engage in those types of responses. When looking at our data from our Regents, in this slide, we have separated our honors students from eighth, in eighth grade, you can see that they do above or perform above the Nassau County. And our non-honor students, our ninth graders, are performing just below or equal to the county. Whereas the county includes both the honors and our, the non-honors together. Ours are separated here. Our Living Environment students perform very well. They are either at or above. Most often times, they are above the county. The Living Environment exam is, contains a lot of science literacy. So by us preparing our students with the science literacy, they are able to be successful on that exam. Our chemistry exams, we've been making strides in closing the gap. We were below the county. We've been now becoming closer to equal the county. Every year, we do analyze data and look at the trends and make adjustments in our content and our curriculum. And in physics, our learners have been performing fairly well. There was a, two years where they, they did not perform as well. However, we are typically trying to continually look at the results. We do dat- data analysis. We look at our curriculum, see where we can make adjustments so that our students can be successful.
I do want to remind the Board of Education, our audience, that in order for students to graduate, they need to pass New York State Regents examinations to get the Regents diploma. They are required to pass five examinations typically, but there are some other pathways to that. And one of those mandatory exams is one of these for Earth Science or Living Environment or Chemistry or Physics Regents exams. To get the Advanced Regents diploma, they need the Living Environment Regents plus one other exam in the physical setting. So it would be either chemistry or science or physics. We are very proud that we, we do challenge our students to take four years of science. And many of them are in physics, where some other areas might just say three years of science is adequate. So our students are being challenged all four years of high school to take a science course.
And our major go, the major goal for the National Research Council for Science Education should be to provide students with a background to systematically investigate issues related to their personal and community priorities. They should be able to frame scientific questions pertinent to their interests, conduct investigations, and seek out relevant scientific arguments and data. Review and apply those arguments to a situation at hand and communicate their scientific understanding and arguments to others. We have aligned our curriculum so that our students.
So I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Education for their support and Dr. Kami. I want to thank Ms. Rosen and Ms. Farigno for their leadership and our teachers for all their work, as well as our parents and, and our learners for all their hard work. We would not be successful without everyone's, everyone's contributions. So thank you so much. Any questions?
That was a great presentation, I would like to just say thank you very much.
I would just like to say that I'm... Such a dramatic shift in approach. And I'm sure some of this has been going on over a period of time, and I just was not as aware of it. But the difference is so dramatic and so engaging. And I'm, anyway, I'm thrilled. It was a wonderful presentation, and I'm very excited about the program.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Go ahead, Ms. Reed.
And I was just gonna add, I was speaking to the board earlier in an earlier presentation, where we're talking about the budget, about an interaction I had with a 2nd grader at Brookside, who was thrilled to tell me about nematodes. And I was just kind of wild that this young man, you know, first of all, nematode, like that's like a $25 word for 2nd grader. I mean, it's worms, but, you know, he's like, we're learning about nematodes. And he was enthusiastic, and just, it was amazing. So, I mean, it's just, it's a small example of the quality of the science curriculum. And I just kind of wanted to share that, that was just kind of like an optic of interaction. I can't imagine, you know, if I were to have a deeper interaction, with more time, what I would receive. So I just wanted to kind of share that experience with you guys, and publicly, to let you guys know, that's just a sample of what's happening. And that was just a, you know, a two-second, hey, what are you learning in school today? Kind of situation, so.
I echo everyone's sentiments. I actually wanted to speak a little bit more about what Ms. O'Hagan was saying in terms of the shifts. Having three children in the district, I remember when I first started with my oldest at elementary school, and I was asking to see more, just like there were just no textbooks for Science and Social Studies, but eventually you saw there was more science coming in, I would say, with my two younger ones. I noticed that change happened. I'm curious if you've also noticed that the level of preparedness, I guess, that's happened based on this change? Are you noticing it helping, or what changes are you seeing at the middle school level, even at the high school level, based on this shift?
Those students, we haven't been able to get determination yet because those students are just in 6th grade now. So we, the shift was reasoned. And each year, Ms. Rosen worked on curriculum. So those students that just started with that are just entering middle school now. But I can say for the 6th grade, the teachers have said they see a lot more curiosity in the students. The students are able to work and investigate and state claims a lot quicker and better than they had prior years.
I just want to add, Mrs. Dereska, a few things. So first, I want to echo Mr. Mignella's sentiments. It's a great presentation, but the amount of work that went on to get to the point where all this is actually happening, there's a lot of people that talk about it, but there's few that do it. And there was, you know, Mr. Mignella, Ms. Frigno, Ms. Rosen, all of our teachers. You know, this is... I've had the pleasure of being in some of the classrooms, just even just the last couple of weeks. In fact, I was in Brookside when they were studying the nematodes. And so excited to stick those sticks in the cups with the ants, I mean with the worms, and look at them with microscopes and describe their bodies. And, you know, so I'm gonna start by apologizing to all of the parents, so that, because I'm sure that when the kids went home, the first thing they did was they went into the yards and they started digging up for worms, because it was such a fun experiment for them. But, you know, we talk about, well, we've talked about the four Cs, which has really expanded to the five Cs, right? You've heard me talk about it, creativity, communication, collaboration, critical thinking. And we add citizenship to that, right, those five Cs. But this is what it looks like in action, right? And in addition to that, we sort of pile on to that problem solving. And what's the newest, which is problem predicting? As we talk to industry and we look at that research, industry doesn't want problem solvers anymore, they want problem predictors. They don't want to ever get to the point where there is a problem. They want our kids to be able to predict what problem is coming so that the problem never really surfaces. And, you know, a lot of times we talk about words, but what you saw presented tonight, and what we see in our classrooms all the time, is what those words look like in action. I mean, I was in a high school physics class last week. I was in an Earth Science class in the middle school today. I was in the 2nd grade science classes last week. And one of the things that is incredibly apparent to me is the level of inquiry, the level of excitement that our kids have, their desire to dig deeper and not to be afraid of the content. It was, I mean, it's just an absolute pleasure. And, you know, you know how well science is tied to mathematics. And, you know, I know I've shared a few years ago that when I was in a previous district, and even my first year here, I asked the kids, when I would see a math lesson, oh, are you guys excited about math? And they would just say, no. And I remember talking to a kindergarten who told me that they're just not very good at math. And that broke my heart, like, why does a 5-year-old think that they're not good at math? How does that happen at such an early age? I can tell you when I go into classrooms now, whether it's, it's honestly any subject area, but in specifically math and science, and I ask the kids, they are thrilled to learn, do you love math? Yes, we learn, you know, it's just, it's, it is such a dramatic change. You know, you really nailed it, Mrs. O'Hagan, it is a dramatic change. And it's not just that we're talking about it, you can see it. You know, I know Mrs. Dereska laughs all the time when I say, you know, if you've done science and you don't come home dirty, you haven't done science. But, you know, I actually mean it. And it is the work of, you know, the three people that you see here tonight, their unbelievable commitment to our kids and the curriculum. I mean, if you couldn't tell, Mr. Mignella is a science geek. I mean, he was a science teacher, he loves this stuff. But, like, the level of detail, the level of excitement. And the other piece that, you know, I don't know if you saw, was the whole thinking, visible thinking strategies. So that is all coming out of Project Zero. That is an intense amount of work that we have done this year, particularly at the secondary level, but in the elementary as well, because it flows through our new teacher program. I mean, you can probably tell how excited I am, because, you know, we talk about this, but to actually see it in action, and Mrs. Rosen and I, we've talked about this for years, you know, like, to see it actually happen, but to see it through the eyes of our kids and their excitement and their understanding and their desire to learn, there is nothing more exciting, there is nothing more thrilling than to see content through the eyes of kids, just with like, love and joy and excitement. And so it really is the work of a lot of people. But I honestly could not express my thanks and gratitude and just excitement more than, you know, what you just saw. It's spectacular. I don't know if the board has any other questions.
No, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Rosen, Ms. Frigno, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have to get our science supervisor to get our internet connection there.
So Dr. Kami, next, do you want to go into your comments?
I will, thank you. So I want to start with what some of you might have heard. The governor made an announcement today. Her announcement about masks in general. She lifted the mask mandate for business. She did not lift the mask mandate for schools. I can tell you that in... We were privy to her thinking yesterday. And she was, she was, there were a lot of questions that were posed to the governor. Our understanding is that she is waiting to see what happens during, after the February break. She conjectures that there might be a lot of traveling going on, and she wants to see what the infection rate is upon return from February break. And so, you know, again, as I've said in my writing, for some, leaving the masks in place makes them happy, for some, it makes them angry. I have shared, and I will continue to share, that Baldwin has just been incredible during this whole thing. People have been respectful, and they have been civil, even when they don't agree. Our kids are just amazing. They do not, they are not reacting to this. I can tell you that we will watch this carefully. For now, the masks stay in place. I believe that she will have an announcement. My understanding is in the beginning of March. So we come back from February break, February 28th, which is the last day of the month. And my understanding is probably in that week, she will have an announcement for whatever that means. So she is taking, she is looking at a combination of metrics. We are not privy to what those metrics are. But for now, we have one more week before we break for vacation. And then we will see what the outcome is when we come back from vacation. I shared with you my visits to schools. It's really been a fun month, going to all of our different schools. It just gives me relief from all of the other stuff that's going on. I could sit and hang out with our kids every single day, because they're just, besides being adorable, the language, the vocabulary that these kids use in the content areas, and they're just so open to what's going on. And I had some very funny experiences, but I won't share them here. I do want to share with the community and the board that Mr. Poprilo is working with our principals to figure out how we can do spring fine and performing arts events. All of the dates that are on the calendar will probably shift and move. But we are working on in-person events that still preserve, you know, the health and safety of everybody. So best information is always on the website. Do not pay attention to the printed calendar, because that is pretty much out of date at this point. I want to share with the board and the community that if you remember years ago, we were allocated $2.6 million for Smart Schools Bond. We have gone through the whole process of planning and going to RFP and getting the plans approved by the state. We have completed the wiring at the high school. We are up to the wiring at the middle school. What does that mean? It means that we are in the process and almost complete of rewiring a good deal of the network infrastructure in our buildings. That includes wiring every single door in our schools. Again, the high school component of that is finished. What that, we are also in the process, we have identified the doors that we're going to replace, what we're gonna place the doors with. And we are moving to a swipe system for all of our doors so that we can get rid of keys, which is an, it's an expense, and it is just a huge laborious situation that exists. But it also is a safety feature. If we ever, God forbid, needed to go into a lockdown with the press of one button, all of the doors lock with the press of one button, all of the doors open. So we are well underway with that. We are also in the final stages of preparing the documentation to go up to the state for the wellness center at the high school. So that is well underway. Tonight, you will, the board is being asked to approve the 22-23 school calendar. So if that is something that you are curious about, it will be posted by next week, probably earlier, but I don't want to, you know, create expectations and not deliver. And the last thing that I just want to make sure that parents are, continue to be aware of, because we will be pushing this, is this new product called Paper. Which, by the way, the name makes no sense at all, so don't even try and make any sense of it. But as a result of unfinished learning, one of the things that we were able to do with the federal grant money that we received was to buy into this service, which is really what it is. And when Ms. Frigno and Ms. Mignella previously shared that it is a 24/7 tutoring service, it really is a 24/7 tutoring service. We're monitoring our students online, but I can give you one example that was shared to Mr. Mignella. We had a high school physics student. His homework was to go over his exam and redo all of the questions that were incorrect. He logged on to Paper, and he was online with a tutor from 9:45 at night to 11:45 at night. And if you think 11:45 is late, I agree with you, but those are the hours that kids keep. You know, way past my bedtime. But the idea behind Paper is that the tutors do not give you answers. They guide you through an inquiry process so that you understand the question, and you are able to figure out the answer. And so it is additional instructional time, it's additional learning time. But if you wake up at 6:00 in the morning and you need a tutor, you can log on. If you're up at 10 o'clock at night and you need a tutor, you can log on. It so far is very promising. Our kids are definitely taking advantage of it. And it's costing the district, at least for now, it's costing the district nothing. We are the only district on Long Island that is using this service until, of course, the word gets out, and then everyone's gonna ask us about it. Can tell from Mr. Mignella's face, it's already happened, right? Yeah, that's what I figured. So that's my report. A lot going on, but I'm really, really proud of the work that's happening in the district.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kami. Yeah, that tutoring program is just amazing, we are so lucky to have that. And I hope that it's very successful, I'm sure it will be, and we'll be able to, you know, have that for a long time going into the future. So now we are at Liaison Reports. Who would like to start us off this evening? Mrs. Reed?
So I am the liaison for the Health and Safety Committee. We had a meeting on, I believe, a week ago, Monday. And Mr. Randazzo just kind of gave us a report of the different projects that are ongoing and almost to completion. The elevator project at Plaza is almost complete. He also spoke about the wiring project that's going on at the district. He talked about future projects that are coming up, the elevator project is still, and, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my notes, and also a window project at Plaza. He also reported on Christopher Thompson working on traffic issues and concerns with the Department of the Highway Department with respect to Lenox and Brookside. There were questions asked about, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Jeez, I can't read my own writing, questions asked about, oh, the stickers at the high school.
We can get you a tutor in that writing if you need it.
Yeah, no, I just, I actually had notes in that I transferred another, just stick with the notes that I wrote from the meeting originally. There were stickers on the water faucet at the high school that, in the 600 building, that Mr. Randazzo explained what that was. There's a situation where they're trying to get in compliance with water. It's weird, the water is coming... It's weird. The water that's coming in has to be a certain parts per million. And the school district is responsible for it, not the people who are providing the water. It's weird. So anyway, he was saying that there's a filtration system and a company that we're using that you can actually scan the labels and actually get like an instant report as to what the water, the parts per million, or what the, what's going on with it. I thought it was kind of interesting. He also talked about protocol for the cleaning for flu and COVID. Of course, they've been on top of that, spoke about having enough PPE equipment and materials for the end of the year that they would be looking into future, securing future products and, and supplies for the upcoming year. Heating issues, someone brought up something about heating issues. They're working on that as well. And we ended the meeting talking about the snow issue on Brad Avenue, because at that time, the snow had just occurred. And we were talking about the dangers, because I actually put my pants on. My daughter, who never talks about anything, came home and said to me, Mom, there was issues with snow on the sidewalk. And my son, who's been out of high school since 2014, said, well, that's been a thing since I was there. And so, but there were, the proper people were contacting, apparently some actions taken place, taken on it. So that's pretty much, long story short, I might have the safety report.
Great, thank you so much. Who wants to go next? Mrs. O'Hagan?
The educational organizations that I belong to continue to meet, although we are meeting virtually. And we're trying to talk about something besides masks. So we are trying to focus on, on other issues that we have every year, things like equity and funding and, and that sort of thing. There was a, our guest at the January meeting of LIEC was Regent Tillis. And he spoke to us about the unfortunate proliferation of charter schools and how they are approved. And he also gave us a report on the region's efforts in their rollout of DEI initiatives and everyone's concern about mental health issues in schools. So anyway, we're trying to, to focus on a, on a variety of things. Let's see, I also attended virtually the Longwood Legislative Breakfast. And that's a breakfast that's held every year in the Longwood School District in Suffolk County. And they have what I think is probably the most extensive legislative program, certainly that I've ever attended on Long Island, and I don't think there's one comparable. But they get all of their local legislators to come to a morning meeting. And there usually are several presentations by people in the educational community. And then there's an opportunity to address the legislators with questions. And the questions are submitted in advance, so they know how to, you know, what they're going to be asked. I think it was a little disappointing this year, and I, I'm, these days, I'm blaming everything on the pandemic. And that is that there's a disconnect, I think, more than ever between schools and, and elected officials in their understanding of the issues that we're dealing with. So that's most of what I did, but I just wanted to mention one thing. Today, I was at the luncheon for the Chamber of Commerce. And what did we talk about? There was a report from legislator Muley on the Bay Park project and nitrogen levels. So we had quite the conversation about nitrogen levels. And, and exactly what Mr. Maniella was talking about, that not just fish die off, but they were talking about the islands that are being destroyed because the amount of nitrogen in the water means that the plants don't have to reach down into the base and to get their nitrogen. And so they're gobbling it up at the surface and then the islands float away. But in any case, there was quite a conversation about that project. And everybody seemed really excited about it. And anyway, I won't give you the details, but it's a wonderful project. And she also, legislator Muley also talked about the road diet project, which it's at the point where every single thing that's supposed to be done has been done. Every approval, every earmarking of money, every, everything. And apparently the delay is now the well-known famous supply chain issue. So everybody's got their fingers crossed that that's going to start up very soon. So that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Dereska?
So I am the liaison for Baldwin Council of PTAs. As most of you know, this report reminds a lot of what's going on in the schools. Obviously, the PTAs continue on doing their best during the pandemic and are still, you know, finding ways to be quite busy and innovative during the time that we have that report. The only two comments I have, one is, I know they mentioned developing a committee to handle nominations for different council business. And Brookside received the School of Character Award, so that was acknowledged at the meeting as well. So that's my meeting report.
Thank you. So I am the liaison for the Baldwin Civic Association. And there's, I don't really have anything to report there as the meeting, the next meeting is tomorrow night. And they are still doing those virtually. So anybody that is available to, to log on, please do so. And then I just have a couple of comments. First, I would like to say thank you very much to the Plaza PTA, who this evening snowflaked my front yard. And a wonderful program, and I now have a bunch of adorable signs and snowflakes all over my front yard, which I appreciate very much. Certainly puts a smile on your face. So thank you to Plaza. And then I just want to quickly address the reason for our meeting being virtual tonight. It really came down to scheduling conflicts. And, you know, it's very important to us to, to get our budget out to the public as soon as we possibly can. And so, you know, we, we went ahead and decided to do our meeting tonight virtually, so that would be possible. So I thank everybody very much for, for being patient with us. I would like to also, as a side note to that, anybody who does attend our meetings knows that when they're in person, on average, we get five to 10, I'm being very generous, actual people in the audience for the school board meetings. When we do the meetings virtually, we have at any given time between 20 and 30 people. So quite a difference, and it's, it's always wonderful to know that, you know, the community is able to access the meetings, you know, more frequently and maybe easier for their crazy schedules. So that is the reason for this tonight being virtual. Thank you. Okay, so now would be the time for comments and questions. Obviously, we, everybody has a chance to submit those via email. We only had two things come in. And one comment came in from somebody that we were not able to decipher the name. And it was not an actual usable email address. It was not a viable email address. So we just want to say, if that person happens to be watching the meeting, that it was received and it was read by, by all. And then we had one more question come in from Mrs. Burcheck in regards to the middle school and the lockers. I, I know that there has been quite a bit of conversation amongst the middle school parents and the weight of the backpacks with the textbooks. Some of the teachers are requiring the textbooks and the laptops. So I know that this is a conversation that has gone on and duly noted. And, you know, the, the building administration has, you know, certainly been enlightened as to these conversations and concerns. So I would just like to say, please contact the principal. And, you know, there will be answers to your questions and, you know, information for you dealing with that subject matter. And your concerns have, have, you know, certainly been heard. Okay. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report as amended and dated February 9th, 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dereska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. The Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-CESC 504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for services in October, November, and December 2021 and January 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. The Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dereska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so as Board President, I am calling for consideration of a consent agenda for business items one through 11. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? No? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business items one through 11?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dereska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve business items one through 11?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Mrs. Coles, just for the record, I just want to make sure that everyone understands, item number nine, there's a typo. The agreement is with Tina Blythe, not Tina Smythe. So that should be correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Blythe, okay. Thank you, Dr. Kami. Okay, so the Board of Education approves the Updated Use of Facilities Report from July 2021 through June 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Oh. Moved by Mrs. Dereska. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. The Board of Education approves the calendar for the 2022-2023 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mrs. Dereska?
Yes.
Missed, seconded by Mrs. Dereska. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Does anybody have any additional items that they would like to discuss?
Nope.
Okay, so seeing no other items, I will go ahead and go over some important dates coming up. Of course, winter recess, February 21st through the 25th. I'm sure everybody's looking forward to that. Hopefully for some rest and relaxation. We have Founder's Day celebrations as well as PTA meetings all throughout February. Please check the website for the dates of all of those. The next Budget Work Session is Wednesday, March 2nd at 7:00 and 7:30 p.m. Sports Night Preview, Saturday, March 5th at the high school at 1:50 p.m. Sports Night Sneak Preview, Monday, March 7th at the high school, 4 p.m. Father Daughter Night will be on Tuesday, March 8th at the high school, 7 p.m. PTA Reflections Reception, Wednesday, March 9th at the middle school, 7 p.m. The next Board of Education meeting will also include the Middle School Musical Preview. And that's Monday, March 9th at the middle school, 8 p.m. And the kindergarten screening will be Tuesday, March 8th through Friday, March 11th at the district office. And I like to include, if you know anybody who has just moved into the district, who may not know the process, or, you know, that they need to, to contact the district office and have the kindergarten screening, you know, please let, let them know. That's always very helpful to your neighbors. And again, that is Tuesday, March 8th through Friday, March 11th. Okay, and I guess that is it for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for, I mean, it was a great informative night, all the presentations. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Can I please get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dereska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a wonderful break, everybody, and get some rest and relaxation, hopefully. And be healthy and safe. Thank you.
Take care. Good night.